I would now call it December 4th, 2017, Blue Springs City Council meeting order. If you would stand with me, observe a moment of silence, and I will lead you in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. I want to welcome you and attendance as well as those that might be watching on cable TV to tonight's city council meeting. Councilman Fowler asked that we pull item C. Unless there are other items to be pulled, I accept a motion for approval.
So moved.
For a second.
Second.
For a roll call, please.
Councilman Kayler.
Aye.
Councilman Levisay.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
Councilman Fowler, item C.
Yes, Your Honor. First, I want to say this, this item C, the first part of this actually generated a really great system for us. I've seen our city clerk use it. It's, it's the system that they can go back, I think it's to 1945, all of our legislative history has been scanned and, and get character recognition back to 1945, which I think, just think is amazing effort that we've had that. It's a great resource. My guess is that tonight, right now, our city clerk can bring it up on her computer and probably our city attorney as well. I guess one thing I would request is that, that city councilmen also be able to use that and maybe even, and when you talk about government transparency, put it out on the internet for our citizens to be able to, to go back and look at legislative history on all of our information. We kind of do, in the last few years, you know, we've got video and we've got information out there on the internet of all the meeting minutes, things like that, but this goes back well farther and it's, it's a, it's a great asset to have. I appreciate all the work that staff did to get this implemented, so.
You noticed that our city clerk is writing.
Okay, okay. So, yeah, yeah, if the council could get that, or my, yeah, I'm, I'm very interested in myself. We could go back to the 1980s and see how you voted on some issues, you know, so, yeah.
So you're dating me, right?
Yeah, definitely. I did want to bring something up on here, and I think it's just my, my take on the language here, so I, I want to make sure I got this. So that's, that's the, we went with this supplier, I think, or contractor to, to do all this scanning, and then that was back in 2015 to do that. And then now we're doing, I think, a, we went out for bid, as I understand, there was only one supplier that really met the proposal, and I think it was the same company, this BTCO. But then what we say in our packet on the information, "A task order contract will allow the city departments to use BTCO service on, on an as-needed basis for documenting imaging projects, each individual project referred to as a task order, without needing to initiate a new contract for every project." I'm following that. It sounds like with only one supplier bidding and, and doing the work. But then it says, "The task order contract with BTCO will cap individual task orders at $50,000, so each task order may be approved administratively." And that's, that sentence is what's got me a little bit, that, that the only, only thing we would limit the spending on is that, that it wouldn't go over $50,000, so we can approve administratively.
Christine, would you or Dan like to answer that?
Sure. Back in June, we asked the city council to amend the contract authority ordinance to include task orders in the future. So this is the first one under that new ordinance that's technically called a task order contract. What happened previously was, we may do contracts with BTCO throughout the year. Individually, they would be under the $50,000 limit, so they wouldn't have to go to city council. But during that year, we may actually spend over $50,000 with them, but it was never a council contract. So this contract goes to city council. We ask you for your authority to let us spend up to $50,000 on each contract with them based on the, the RFP and the bidding process that we did. So that's what this does. And the ordinance also states that anything that we approve under these task order contracts, we have to have money appropriated in the budget to do that.
Okay. The, I guess the, the task order concept is a little bit new to me. I know that we do see on contracts, regular contracts, we do get some information on contracts over $5,000. Is, what about task orders? How are we going to receive information on that?
We haven't actually had that question yet, so I think we could work through a process where we could tell you the projects that we're approving. The closest contract that we've had that works like this is a contract that we have with Trion Systems, and that they, that administratively we could approve for them to work on projects for us. But we can look into developing a process so that we report back on how we're actually utilizing this form.
Okay. And then also on this one, this specific one tonight that's in front of us, I didn't see an end date on it, so is it, how long is this, this situation open for?
It says, it's on the second page on their project timeline. I don't know if you can see that pulled up. Our contracts are limited to five years maximum, based on that contract authority ordinance, and so this one's for a little bit shorter time than that. It goes through September 30th, 2022.
Okay. I do see four years, nine months, yeah. So, and then, and then back to the issue about the, we would limit individual task orders to $50,000 so that they can be approved administratively. If it's, if something's going to cost more than $50,000, why wouldn't we bring that to the council?
If it costs more than $50,000 on an individual project, it would come back to you for approval.
Okay.
Yeah, the contract authority ordinance grants the city administrator authority to sign contracts for $50,000 and under.
Right. And just with the topic of scanning, the, I would think that a, a project of $50,000 relative to scanning would be quite a lot in today's, because we, most everything we do is already available electronically, and you can search by characters out on the internet today on most of our historical, or most of our current documents.
That's correct. That $50,000 was chosen because that's in the contract authority ordinance. We recently finished a project scanning all of our capital asset records, and I think it was about $4,000. And then we are next working on a project to scan in all of our old budgets and financial audits, and I think it's around $1,000.
Okay. So these will probably come back a whole lot less than $50,000 each time. So it's really just about how, how it's communicated back to the council and getting the format for that, for that flow of information.
Yes, we can take care of that.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Take care of everything you need.
Yep.
If I may, just one thing, Christine, if you don't mind. You mentioned that, that it has to be approved in the budget prior. Is there a line item in the budget, like miscellaneous scanning, or how, how does that hit the budget, or do we have to come back and bring that up and make a budget amendment?
No, in, in most departments, probably in the supplies or contractual services budget that has some options for doing this type of work, it's not a separate account number or anything, it falls into one of those other categories.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, is there a motion to approve? So moved.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries. Next, we have a public hearing on a vacation of city right-of-way located east of intersection Southwest Third Street and Southwest Webster Drive.
Mayor, the city has the following exhibit to enter into the record. Planning Commission staff report with attachments, site location map, site aerial map, vacation map, affidavit of publication in the examiner on November 11th, 2017, application with attachments, 185-foot notification map, names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site, copy of letter sent to said property owners, Title IV Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference, 2014 Comprehensive Plan by reference, and Bill Number 4532 approving the vacation. This is all we have to offer for the record.
Okay, Ms. Allen.
Thank you, Your Honor, and council members. Again, this evening, before you, is requested to vacate a portion of existing city right-of-way. This is the Eagles Ridge Estates PRO subdivision. The portion in question is the eastern terminus of Southwest Webster Drive. It was originally stepped out in order to connect through to future phases to the east. However, the recently revised and approved, remove, plat, removed Southwest Webster Drive from continuing through. Thus, the Southwest Webster Drive step-out is no longer required, and as such, again, the applicant is requesting to vacate a portion of the right-of-way at this intersection with Southwest Webster Drive and Southwest Third Street. This item was heard at the planning commission last Monday. It is recommended for approval, eight to zero. There was one change at the meeting from a recommended condition number two to be done prior to final plat. That, that actual piece of the step-out would be filled in, as it were, but planning commission at the request of the applicant delayed that to prior to issuency of occupancy for that lot that will have to be reconnected, rebuilt at that location. Again, both planning commission staff were agreeable to that modified condition, which is shown in your council information form as condition number two. Stand for any questions.
Are there any questions from the council? Councilman Fowler.
Yes, Your Honor. Your map up there, there is some activity in the last couple of weeks, not about this specific vacation, but on the map up there, just south of that division, there's an awful lot of road, looks like road construction going on, and I think that's going to be major coming into there, is that?
That, that is correct.
Okay. And, and just for the public's curiosity, because I get questions on it, when is that supposed to intersect with Seven Highway?
I may defer to our public works director for that information.
Council, Mayor, the, the developer has been working diligently to get that road built. Unfortunately, the last few hundred feet from Seven Highway going east to the section you see, C being built, is being imbedded by a gas line that is too shallow, that needs to be relayed. We don't have a timeline from MGE yet, or Spire, as to when that line will be relocated.
Okay.
Anyone else? And I would imagine, as, as I looked at it, strictly right in, right out, right? Will be right in, right out, but you can't cross the intersection and go south on it.
At this time, however, there's still, the developer is working with MoDOT to make that a full access.
Okay.
All the way across.
All right, thanks. Any other questions, Ms. Allen? Okay, we'll go to the public. Is there anyone in order to like to speak in support of? In support of? Opposition two? Opposition two? Close this public hearing. Anyone like to introduce it?
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
First reading of bill number 4532, in ordinance vacating an existing city right-of-way on property located east of the intersection of Southwest Third Street and Southwest Webster Drive in Blue Springs, Jackson County, Missouri.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
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 Discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All the same signs.
Second reading of bill number 4532, in ordinance vacating an existing city right-of-way on property located east of the intersection of Southwest Third Street and Southwest Webster Drive in Blue Springs, Jackson County, Missouri.
Move the bill be approved on second reading, given the appropriate ordinance number.
For a second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Levisay.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Councilman Kayler.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4702.
Next, we have a public hearing on a rezoning of Baumgartner Park and Centennial Poolplex.
Mayor, the city has the following exhibit to enter into the record. Planning Commission staff report with attachments, site location map, site aerial map, proposed plat map, application with attachments, Title IV Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference, 2014 Comprehensive Plan by reference, and Bill Number 4533 approving the rezoning. This is all we have to offer for the record.
Ms. Allen.
Yes, thank you again, Your Honor, and council. Again, before this evening is a request actually by the city to rezone the existing Baumgartner Park and Centennial Poolplex from its current single-family residential zoning of SF7 to the fairly new designation of public land and open space, or PLOS zoning district. This was presented to planning commission last week in conjunction with platting, also moving forward here, to then move forward with some transfer to the school district. So at this time, it seemed appropriate to take these types of public lands out of existing, let's say, non-conforming, but non-applicable zoning districts such as SF7, and move them into what was added to the Unified Development Code, the UDC, in 2010, the PLOS, or Public Land and Open Space zoning district. So with that, again, the planning commission also recommends approval unanimously, and I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions, Ms. Allen? Seeing none? Go to the public. Anyone in order to like to speak in support of? Support of? Opposition two? Opposition two? Close this public hearing. Anyone like to introduce it?
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
First reading of bill number, excuse me, first reading of bill number 4533, in ordinance rezoning property from SF7, single family, to PLOS, public land and open space.
Move the bill, bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
For a second.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All the same sign.
Second reading of bill number 4533, in ordinance rezoning property from SF7, single family, to PLOS, public land and open space.
Move the bill be approved on second reading, given the appropriate ordinance number.
For a second.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Councilman Kayler.
Aye.
Councilman Levisay.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4703.
Next, we have introduction, reading of bill 4534, approving final plat for Baumgartner Park, first plat.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
First reading of bill number 4534, in ordinance approving final plat for Baumgartner Park, first plat.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
For a second.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
See, second, carrying in a voice vote. Voice vote.
Oh, we didn't vote yet.
Not yet.
No, in favor, aye.
Aye.
All the same sign.
Second reading of bill number 4534, in ordinance approving final plat for Baumgartner Park, first plat.
Move the bill be approved on second reading, given the appropriate ordinance number.
For a second. Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Councilman Kayler.
Aye.
Councilman Levisay.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4704.
Next, we'll accept a motion to continue the public hearing under the annexation of 27-711 East Wyatt Road into the city limits.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Next, we have introduction, reading of bill 4535, final plat for Tequesta Village Lots 1 through 3. I had to say that.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
First reading of bill number 4535, in ordinance approving final plat for Tequesta Village Lots 1 through 3, tracks A and B.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
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 Discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All the same sign.
Second reading of bill number 4535, in ordinance approving final plat for Tequesta Village Lots 1 through 3, tracks A and B.
Move the bill be approved on second reading, given the appropriate ordinance number.
Second.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Edmondson.
You.
Edmondson.
You.
Me?
Oh, I.
I'm sorry. I'm.
Oh, it was you.
Yep, that's you.
Missed my turn almost.
Is that an aye?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'm sorry. Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Councilman Kayler.
Aye.
Councilman Levisay.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4705.
Next, we'll accept the motion to adopt resolution 97-27.
So moved.
For a second. Any discussion on that? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries. Next, we have introduction, reading of bill 4536.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
I can't keep up with y'all. First reading of bill number 4536, in ordinance approving final plat for Colonial Highland Second Plat.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
For a second.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All the same sign.
Second reading of bill number 4536, in ordinance approving final plat for Colonial Highland Second Plat.
Move the bill be approved on second reading, given the appropriate ordinance number.
Second.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Councilman Kayler.
Aye.
Councilman Levisay.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4706.
Next, we have introduction, reading of bill 4537.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
First reading of bill number 4537, in ordinance amending Chapter 265 Fair Housing, Sections 265.010, 265.030, and 265.0.040 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Blue Springs, Missouri, to expand the city's public policy to eliminate discrimination.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
For a second.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, Your Honor.
Yes, Councilman.
There has been some email traffic on this, and I think I heard back a little bit, and basically, some of the concerns that were out there basically are addressed by, I think I heard, federal and state legislation, and it would, our policy kind of has been redundant, but also sometimes if the, if they change theirs and we have something in our ordinances, we, we get behind by doing things like that. Is that, is that an overgeneralization, or is that kind of what? My takeaway?
I'll, I'll let staff address that, but I will add to that. One of the problems you get into is enforcement, investigation and enforcement.
Yeah, yeah.
And we certainly, we can't do that. It's either done by HUD or the Missouri Commission on Human Rights.
But if we, if the city is aware of something, we will escalate that to the appropriate enforcement agency?
Yeah, well, what we do is, I think we refer it to the particular agency, whether it's HUD or Missouri Commission on Human Rights, is that right, or city attorney?
Yes.
And I think I saw somewhere in that traffic that since 2010, there have only been eight complaints, and those were based on race, disability, and family structure. And all those went to the.
Appropriate agency.
To the appropriate agency, right.
Okay.
Councilman Culpepper.
Yes, I just, I, I want to make a statement concerning that, because that is the reason we created the human HRC. So I feel like the city and the council is endorsing the fact that we do not condone discrimination in any way, shape, or form. As I was researching some of the things out, obviously on the web, so it must be true, but it was, it was a, an article, and it was put out by the federal, federal paper. And what they said was, while sex is what your doctor says, your birth anatomy says about you, gender is how you express yourself in the theater of life. That, to me, means that by changing, in particular, the word sex to gender, we have addressed some of those issues that we're hearing so much about on our emails.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All the same sign.
Second reading of bill number 4537, in ordinance amending Chapter 265 Fair Housing, Sections 265.010, 265.030, and 265.040 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Blue Springs, Missouri, to expand the city's public policy to eliminate discrimination.
Move the bill be approved on second reading, given the appropriate ordinance number.
For a second.
Second.
For the discussion, roll call, please.
Councilman Kayler.
Aye.
Councilman Levisay.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4704.
Next, we have a presentation that has been, a presentation has been postponed and will be rescheduled at a later time.
Yes.
That brings us to Merrill announcements. I hope everyone is prepared weather-wise, because tomorrow night is the mayor's Christmas tree lighting ceremony that will start at 5:30 at City Hall. And I always take a lot of pride in saying that we don't truck our tree in, our tree is homegrown. And I think it's up now to about 40 feet, is that right, Chris? Aren't we at about 40 feet?
That is correct.
Or is that?
That is correct.
Okay, yeah, so we're getting up there pretty good. I just hope it's not disturbing us to, to have to come down when we do the recon, the construction there at City Hall. Because I take a lot of pride in that tree, as everybody will know. So that starts at 5:30 tomorrow evening, it'll be hot dogs, hot chocolate, cookies, crafts. Santa will be showing up in his Santa mobile. And, yeah, and do, do we have the fireworks? Did we get that resolved?
Yes.
Okay. And we'll have fireworks, once the tree is lit, fireworks will go off. So we do it upright.
Are we going to gag the mascot from the Mavericks, so he doesn't start the countdown ahead of you?
Uh, chief, let's make sure we're all signed. Control those mascots. The other thing is, on the next Sunday, at Blue Springs South High School, at 1:30 in the afternoon, there's an annual concert. And I've been privileged the last 17 years to be the master ceremonies. And for those of you that don't want to be sitting frustrated watching the Chiefs, please come to that concert on Sunday at Blue Springs South High School. It's for a very good cause, it's for the community services league, and they do a great service in providing for people that are in need in our community. The, if you take a look at your scheduled events forthcoming, the planning commission meeting is not canceled. And the board of adjustment meeting is canceled. Okay. That brings us to Merrill announce, that brings us to Thaw's Defundit. And this is probably the last time I'll have a quote from the National League of Cities have a quote from the National League of Cities Conference that was in Charlotte that most of us attended. We were struck by a number of speakers, but this one really, I think, touched the heart and souls of many people that were in attendance. And it's from Nashville, Tennessee Mayor Megan Berry, on the death of her 22-year-old son that had just graduated from college in June of this year and died in July of an overdose of drugs in Littleton, Colorado, on opioid cocktails. It wasn't, she said, it wasn't any one particular drug, it was a cocktail of drugs. And that's got to be hard, but she was a real trooper in talking about it. I think we all know the opioid crisis is serious in this country. But the quote that she and her husband came up with after losing their son is, and I quote, "Power is waking up every day and making a difference in somebody's life," end quote. So I think we're all, we're struck by that when we heard it. And again, I just applaud her courage after losing a child. And one of the things that you don't think of is losing your child. You think that your child is supposed to be here when you're gone. And to be able to do that, and especially the cause of it, certainly is just heartbreaking and touching. Next, we'll go to visitors. I do have one visitor's appearance form, and that's from Scott Casey.
Good evening, Your Honor and members of the city council. I'm here today to discuss briefly the Fair Housing Amendment that you passed this evening. This amendment came before you today because of a request that I made to the HRC to investigate our existing amendment, or our existing ordinance. The HRC's response to that request was overwhelmingly positive. That request specifically was for the Fair Housing Ordinance to include wording that protected members of the LGBT community specifically. One reason, unfortunately, as you, as you are aware now, the final wording that you voted on today did not include wording to protect sexual orientation or gender identity as protected classes under our city's Fair Housing Amendment. One reason provided to the HRC for this was that the Missouri state statute was sufficient to protect these classes and that this ordinance matched closely with that state Fair Housing Ordinance. And Councilman Fowler also mentioned that earlier in his testimony, that the federal and state laws were protecting that. And with all due respect to him, that is simply not the case. There have been numerous reports and studies that do show that LGBT members of the LGBT community are discriminated against when it comes to buying or renting homes. And they are not currently able to seek any kind of recourse through our legal system. You know, one reason we may not be seeing complaints about this is because they know that they don't have a case. Some groups, that there is an ongoing case right now, the Missouri Supreme Court, which was recently, they, the, yeah, the lower court had ruled that sexual orientation was not protected, and this person who had filed was not allowed to file as a victim of discrimination. That will be going before the Missouri Supreme Court. And there's also a, an ongoing bill at the state level, the Missouri Nondiscrimination Act, which is seeking to include these protections at the state level. But that bill has not been passed yet, and those protections are not yet in place. Many cities around the area have started to implement these protections at the city level. And the reason for our request is we wanted Blue Springs to join them. Some of those cities include Columbia, Kirksville, Kirkwood, Kansas City, St. Louis. There's over a dozen cities now in Missouri that do have those protections. Speaking to Mayor Ross's point about enforcement, the current existing Chapter 265 does include measures for enforcement and administration through the creation of a Fair Housing Committee, which I'm not sure if that committee is currently active, but I would think under the existing ordinance, we could certainly reactivate that in the case where there would be determined to be discrimination based on factors not protected at the state or federal level. But that's really all I had today in closing. I hope that you'd be willing to reconsider this issue and reinclude the wording that was stricken out of the final proposal. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Good morning. Okay. Thank you for your testimony. Okay, we will go to our city attorney for a motion to so moved.
Your Honor, a motion for the council to go into closed session pursuant to Section 610.021, Subparagraph 2, revised statutes of Missouri for the purpose of privileged communications between a governmental body or its representative and legal counsel, including real estate, and that any minutes, documents, and other records discussed or taken during the closed session remain closed, and that this body stand adjourned at the completion of such session.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Levise?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Kayler?
Aye.